This is the Wednesday, December 12, 2018, meeting of the Accretive Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped. We do have a forum. Our first item of business is the secretary's report from our November 7, 2018 meeting. Does anyone have any clarifications to make, any questions before we have a motion to accept the minutes?
On the secretary's report, it says, "Diane obtained an estimate from the old fence." It was Jim Rock that obtained it.
I obtained it and I brought it in.
Okay, great. Anything else for the minutes? Okay, can we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the secretary's report with the changes.
Is that here? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And before we move to the financial report, one thing we had talked about at our last meeting that I just remembered yesterday, so didn't make it into the agenda, was to revisit the signs that we had talked about. So Jerry, I think you were going to check the bylaws, and Jenny, we're going to talk to Dan Lennard, and I found an online company that does signs as well. I'm sure the town has another company.
I would like to say that Pam was fabulous. I walked in, two minutes at four, and she closed at four. And she said, "It's $15." And I said, "Well, we're not doing that." And she said, "Well, I can copy it for you," so she called me, which is
Great.
Which made her stay open even for the man behind me. She was so nice.
Pam LeBonte is great at the town clerk's office.
Yep.
Lucky to have her.
I'm not sure this is helpful. I did go by the schools. The elementary school doesn't have, they do not enter, and I think it's because you're afraid to enter next on either one. The middle school does have a sign that's a stop sign shape, and it says, "Do not enter." Quite similar to what's here. It's not quite the same sign.
Okay. So are there restrictions in the bylaws? Regulations? For like status ones?
Didn't really say anything that applied there. And she also said, "Talk to the selectmen. There might be different rules because the library was a town building." And talk to Jim about installing.
Okay. All right.
How big a sign do you find a point like?
Let's see.
Looks like one of these.
Things like that, that was what I was able to find. It's sort of what we have already. I mean, I think these sizes are, I guess, you know, general, generally acceptable sizes for municipalities.
Have you noticed any difference? Are fewer people coming in?
Well, we're not on that side of the building to see when people are coming. So it's just we see it by coincidence. I can't say really if there's any less because we're not, you know, our offices aren't on that side. We're not doing any work on that side. We really, we tend to see it if we're, we happen to be outside or if we're in the children's room. But I can't say that we're noticing it any less. And like I said at the last meeting, when people will say, "Oh, I saw the sign. It was too late. I was already coming in." You know, "So now I know for next time." A lot of people do miss the entrance when they're doing 45 down Middle Road and set up the posted speed limit, and they miss the entrance. And then they figure they'll just swing in at the second entrance. You know, turn around down there.
So the signs help them though?
It could be, yeah.
Like you said, they do it once and then realize I shouldn't be doing it.
Right. We've, we've also noticed a thing happening lately where people are coming in this entrance, and then they're turning the car around if there's space to do that, and then driving back out that way versus going around the building. We've had delivery trucks even doing that recently, if there's room to just turn instead of taking, you know, an extra.
Maybe you could pay arrows like that.
We did have the arrows when we first came in here and before the second, the top code went down. And, and again, I think if you're just going and you're not paying attention. I mean, we've got a one-way sign right at the end of the deck there that's very visible, so.
The sign that Kristen just showed us here, that red and red lights sign. Just get two, put one over there and put one over here facing, so if they start to come up this alley, they'll see it.
Yeah, I think it's important to put one here, especially because you can't see.
That's right. Cars coming down, making the corner.
Yeah, might be dangerous.
I did talk to Dan.
Just replace those signs that's there that says "one way" or something with that little big red dot, you know.
Yeah, that's up to you all to decide that. If that's what you vote to do, then that's, yeah, if you vote to do that.
How about a "library entrance" sign on that? That right, on the driveway on the side where you come in. It says "library entrance." Maybe that would be another.
What did you say, Dan?
I talked to Dan. He said he has a variety of different signs. He said he has "one way," "do not enter," "not this way," you know, kind of like, I mean, it was like a
It's like a 45 sign.
He almost had like the sign. I did ask him about the sign that was there. I said, I asked him if he knew how it got there. He said, "No," so the mystery of the sign continues.
Oh, wow.
But I asked him if it could be moved down lower to be in the line of sight. And he said, "Yeah, that's no problem." He was actually going to come the following day. When I talked to him, I'm like, "No, no, no." I'm like, "Let's, you know, we have a meeting on the 12th. Let me do that," and so I have to call back tomorrow. But he said that he can come and put signs up. He said he'll, he could put "do not enter" signs if we want to do that. He'll move them down. He was, you know, he was pretty
I wonder if that "enter here" is, is the one we want, right over the "enter here" sign.
I mean, I can definitely, I can ask him to see if he has any to enter here, like on both sides. Or is there a sign on both sides? No, there's only a pole on one side that says.
Right, right. With an arrow. But I think we definitely need something that says, "Do not."
On that end.
So you want, you want a "do not enter" over here backwards, right? Okay, so I think that's really important.
Okay. Two of them.
At the corner here and on the pole with the one-way?
No, you don't need it all the way. If he's made it up to the string, he might as well leave.
So then people don't go out that way.
Yeah, you need it at the corner over here so the people out on the lot don't try coming up this drive. I mean, if he's always, I could, might as well.
Well, then he'll be making a U-turn, which might be worse.
Well, I think if there's one there and there's one there, you know, you, you get people, they'll see it. See it there before they start, and if they miss it, maybe there'll be enough room to back out.
I wonder if he has a sign, though, and again, this isn't my decision, that says "not an exit" over there. Because if someone sees a "do not enter" sign, and we're liable to have people start asking us why they can't enter over there anymore. Even if it's in facing the other direction. Like, I'm just trying to think of what we're going to get asked.
I think he wants the "do not enter" at this corner.
Sure, maybe we do, but if it's over here, because if people are not making it to the corner. Like, people are ma, people are pulling into this, pulling in here, and then they're turning around. They're going to the book drop. They're turning around in the handicap spots and going back out instead of driving around the building. So if the sign, if it says something like, "Not an exit," like, or "wrong way," right, fine, maybe that's the better language. "Wrong way," because we probably also need to be consistent with language.
But if he's turned around reading that sign, he might as well leave.
No, he might as well do what he just did in reverse and go out. Well, you know what? We can put up 75 signs, because people are still going to do okay on them. So that's, that's my other thought on that. Like, you know, I mean, we can put all these up. And I think it's good that we are, and we should be covered in that way, but that doesn't mean that drivers are going to stop doing it.
But if you have the sign, and he does go the wrong way, and someone turns into the parking lot, then he's at fault, not the person that's doing it.
Sure, sure. No, no, I know. I agree with you on that. It's coverage. It just doesn't mean that people are going to stop. Doing it, no matter what, where the signs are or not anymore.
It'll cut down.
Makes me realistic.
Totally eliminate.
Right. It's not going to eliminate the problem.
So we want to try for either "not an exit" or "wrong way" over here facing this way.
I like "wrong way."
So, so that we're, okay, so we'll go with "wrong way." And then going out this way, we're going to have the sign that's there now, which is "do not enter," lowered. Okay, and then, you think that should be it?
You want a "do not enter" at this corner?
And you want a "do not enter" on this corner.
Maybe you just put it on the one-way sign.
That's what I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sign's there already.
Isn't that near the corner?
Is it one-way?
Yeah, right at the kitty corner of the deck.
If it's poles, you could put them on.
Right, and another "do not," so "do not enter" on the corner.
That big red dot. Well, it's very, very
Or, or another one that just says "wrong way." Maybe that one says "wrong way," and that one does.
Ah, right, so it's the same.
Okay.
Same message.
Do we need a "runway" sign?
Runway dummy.
What is that?
Enter here.
Over there.
I don't know. I think the
Don't want to have too many signs either.
But isn't the, isn't the "one way" suggesting you enter there? Maybe it's not. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong about that. Though, to me, the "one way" facing this way means you enter here, and the "one way" facing out that way means you exit there. But maybe it doesn't.
Parking lot entrance, but entrance, entrance there. The arrow, that might be, I'm confused. That's it.
I can see the "entry" sign.
Instead of just "one way."
Sounds good. That's very clear. Entrance, I think. I hope.
Okay, got it.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Jen.
All right.
And thank you, Jerry, for getting the bylaws. I wonder if that's something that we should have here?
Yeah, I've asked before and I've been gotten the same thing, but paying for it, and I feel as a town department, we should pay for a copy of the bylaws. So I have to ask again. I mean, I just haven't asked the right person to ask.
So I'm asking. I know that they do adjust them and update them, but it would still be good to have a copy here. Okay. All right, so perhaps the next time we meet, maybe in January, we will see some of these new signs, maybe before then. Okay. So moving on to the financial report, which Dina has provided to us.
So if we're, at the end of this month, we're halfway through the fiscal year, and by the time we enter in payroll for the rest of this month, then we'll be at just under 50% spent out from the salaries line. So I think we're right where we expected to be for this time of year. In terms of operating, we're at 62.6% spent out, which is normal for this time. This is the time of year where I start to pay a little more attention to the energy line. We've just paid the sixth ever source bill for the fiscal year, and we're still under 50% of that line being spent out, and so I'm feeling pretty comfortable with that. Our ever-source bill for December was slightly higher than the same time last year, but the temperature has been lower, so that's, it's nice that they provide all those comparisons around the bills. So I'm feeling comfortable with that line, and with all of the other lines as well. I think we're, we're pretty much on track at the halfway point. You know, just as a reminder, we're going to spend out that materials line within the third quarter. So sometime before spring, that materials line will be spent out, which is normal. So I'm not concerned about the 56.4, because then we revert to C8, and then we're rolling through.
Great. Okay, any questions about the budget? Can we have a motion, please?
I'm motion to accept the budget. Is it?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. And moving on to the draft proposal of the fiscal year 2020 budget. So does everyone have a copy of that?
So Nancy and I met last week, to, Nancy, the lone member of the budget committee, and I met last week.
Small group.
Small but productive.
Met to go over everything, and even though there isn't an 8% overall increase that's being proposed, it's primarily all driven by union contracts and by, like, our sales contract. So it's not, it's expenses we, we have to go along with, so at least for the most part. I don't know if we want to talk about it line by line, or if you just want to?
We can talk about the salaries, perhaps, and then if you want to talk about the other lines.
Okay. So, well, you know the proposal that you've put in place for the directors line, so thank you for that.
Trying to bring that up to what the average is in the region, so that's why that amount is higher, as I think most folks here know. And then the others are mostly.
They're mainly contract-driven. The Patient Services Associate is not a union position. That's just a contracted at-will employee like I am. But when I had spoken with the town administrator a couple of months back about the future of that position, it was recommended that that position get a 5% increase for fiscal year '20, because that is what the union members will be getting, is a 5% increase. So that is why, that's it. I think it also keeps that position ahead of the highest member in the union, which is something we've been trying with that position. There's a lot more responsibility that comes in line with that position. So it should be at a significantly higher, and she does a fantastic job. I mean, if it were based off of that, it would be more.
Could try and squeeze it.
If you want to, but when, when it was, I thought it, when I had the conversation with Mr. Noble a couple of months back, it was a very productive conversation in terms of matching it up to what other town employees who are not in unions are making, compared to also what the ones who are in a union are making. So I mean, I think for what, it's fair within the wage and classification study that the town did as well. So, and I know that's being factored in to the process on it. But I mean, if you have any comments on that, of course, it's the time to do it. And as far as the library techs, like I said in my email, I was surprised to see that the children's room position was still separate from the rest of the tech positions in the draft that I received from the finance director. And I think that maybe was just
It was like that last year, wasn't it, before?
It was like that last year.
Approved.
It, right, it was before it was approved, and it was only to, to highlight that we weren't, that we were trying to do something specific with the money, you know, for the first time. And, and so I think maybe that was just an oversight when she prepared the draft. Again, she's on maternity leave and is doing this from home down there. So I would assume that when this goes to the finance committee and to town meeting, it will be, the two will be together, not separate. It's the same line, you know, the, the money is coming out of the same line number. But it is still left separate here. And those amounts are completely, for, in the library techs line and in the new children's room assistant line, those are completely union-driven, so there's nothing we can do to modify. We wanted to add or decrease. That's not an option. The new union contract is very, it's based on steps, which the old union contract wasn't, so it's based on years of service and where you fall according to position on the chart, which is great.
That's finally
Something that's happening for the staff here, because they are being guaranteed an increase every fiscal year.
And that's for three years, that contract?
That contract is good for three years, yes. And the custodian falls within the same part of the contract. The custodian line, you don't see it as big of an increase there, because that line has always had, for, you know, long before my time, some cushion within it, because you'll remember from the Russell days, the custodian would come in to do shoveling, or, you know, which we haven't used here. But we've never reduced that line. We've always left it at, you know, right around the same amount with the cushion, and we've been able to use any extra from that to supplement the tech line if needed. So the custodian line, you don't see a big increase too, but that line is also getting, and that position is getting a 5% increase as well, even though you don't see it reflected there. But it's because there was some cushion, and now there will be no cushion in that line. I mean, it's pretty solid that the DPW and the building department are taking care of our lawn maintenance and the shoveling when that needs to be done, and we aren't relying on our custodian for that as we did in the past. I mean, that's a very firmly three-year established practice now, so I can't imagine that's going to suddenly change. And the longevity is also contractor, so the increase to that is due to the increase to the union contract for longevity benefits.
Okay, great. Any questions about salaries? Want to just hit the highlights?
Sure, just the increases in the operating lines would be, building and grounds, I'm looking to increase by $500. So from $2,000 to $2,500. Mainly because we've now been here three years this month, and there are little things that occasionally need to be taken care of or be replaced, and having an increase to that building and grounds line would certainly help do that without looking into using money from gift cards. So slight increase there. The, oh, sure.
Yeah, I just, when Dana and I were going through that one line, I'd, because I was in this building for so many years before you were, I did remind her this building's coming up on 100 years old, and even though you're doing the renovations she did as well as what we did, it's still definitely going to need some more work as time goes on. So it's, it's important to increase that item, that line item a little bit, so it was a good move for Dana to get some money there.
And the tech support line also has an increase. That's, tech support is through the sales network, and that is the contract increase, plus with the addition of the laptops to the support line. Sales has a very minimal increase of 2.2% for this fiscal year. We couldn't do half of what we do without the network memberships, so that's a small increase for what, for the services we get. And everything else is the same. So I think that the increase really, I mean, it's a 9.8% increase for the salary overall, and only, you know, 1.8% in the operating. About 8% total.
Okay.
And I think operating, I mean, as, we did get some increases to operating last year that were pretty significant at the time, and I think we can continue to work with that for FY '20. Maintain energy. Then we got a fairly substantial increase to the, one of the bottom lines, the other supplies, which is what we update our material with, and that was recognized that that really needed a boost. And we got that last year. The travel line had an increase last year, which will help with spring conferences primarily. So, you know, I, I think the operating wanted to be pretty, keep it kind of, you know, where we can maintain it, just maintain it, keep it as level as possible. Especially because we have such large increases with the salary lines.
1.8 is pretty good, Dina.
Yeah.
It's almost level.
Okay, any questions or comments? I know this has to be submitted today to town hall, and eventually at some point, we will have an audience with the finance committee to talk about the budget. So hopefully, everybody will be there. I will be there with Dina to support and to discuss probably salary increase. So I hope, whatever the date is, it works for everybody. I think they may end up having their meeting here again, like they did last year.
Hopefully, yeah. And we've been told that it will most likely be January, where, when the budget hearings begin, but that doesn't mean ours will be in January. It was ended in January last year. So I would expect typically during Wednesdays. So I would expect if it stays that way, we're looking at towards the end of January on Wednesday.
Would you agree?
We'll have to come up with something to do. If it's held here, we'll have to come up with another event like last year. That was all just good timing. That wasn't pre-planned last year. And that's when the best things happen, when they aren't premeditated. So we just have to, maybe we'll just book every Wednesday.
Okay. Well, there's no other discussion we do need to vote to approve.
I make a motion to accept the FY '20 proposed budget.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, the next item is the revision to the community room policy. Dina is suggesting a couple of very minor edits to that.
And the reasons for this come up is that we don't have a lot of groups, including town groups, reserving the room in advance. Often, it's, they're, under the current policy, town groups can reserve it six months in advance. What normally ends up happening is two weeks before a meeting date, we get a call, "Hey, town hall is full. Can you fit us in?" And we can't, because we have an outside group who we've already committed to. So what I'm hoping to do is give us a little more flexibility for town departments by having it that town departments can, or boards, can book the room up to three months in advance, whereas outside groups can only do it one month in advance. I think that just would make us more, we have one room to work with here, which does put a strain right away on what we're doing, because it makes it a challenge when we're trying to schedule library programs, and the demand is there for more and more programs. So as we try to work on that, we've, if we've already committed to an outside group three months ahead of time, we, on the one hand, know right away that it's not available, but then on the other hand, it's kind of like, "Oh, bummer, if we'd only had, you know, had a little more time, you know, for us to book or for other town departments to reserve the room." So that's, that's my reasoning for, for suggesting it. Only slight hiccup that could come to that, we did have, last, last year, we had a Girl Scout group that had wanted to reserve the room for the year, and they need to know that they can have it for the year. And I'm now saying one month only for outside groups, but we did make an exception in the trustees meeting for that particular group. And so I'm hoping that, without it being stated here, that if we were to have a youth-based group that is based out of the town, that we would be able to, that I could come to you and say, "Can we make an exception for this particular group?"
Well, it does say the library board of trustees reserves the right to restrict use of the community room, so it can fall under something like that.
Something like that, right.
Though restrict may not work in that.
But it also does say there that nonprofit groups serve in the Accretive Community on a first-come, first-arrived basis. So you could think that if, in the summer, someone approached us and said, "We would like, we know the policy. We would like an exception to that policy for nine months," then since it's first come, first served, perhaps we could look at that as a way of modifying it. Because I don't want to get too wordy and, "Well, we'll do it for this group, but we won't do it for that group." And maybe, and I'm using the Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts as an example, but really, any youth-based group or a service group for the town who came and proposed something for nine months, you know, in advance, and we could just meet like we did for that, and then determine whether or not it was doable.
That makes sense.
But I, I think this will give us more flexibility for our own programming, but also will give us the flexibility for those last-minute requests that we get from the town that we normally have to say no to, because it's been reserved for a few months from outside groups that maybe aren't serving the Accretive Community necessarily. Maybe there's a couple of people from the Accretive Community who are attending, but they don't, they're not serving the community outside.
So outside groups, three months?
No, outside groups, one month in advance, and then in-house, so town groups, three months, which was six months, but no But no one has come to us six months, five months, four months, three months, and asked for the room that far in advance. Two months, maybe. But, so three is just not, it's still giving them the opportunity to do it in advance if they need to. I mean, I think, as you know, most boards and departments don't know three months out when their schedule is. As we know, when they're doing a month to one.
So that's very generous.
Yeah, I think it is, right. But not, it's not, you know, being, going overboard like maybe six months. So. The other thing that I was reviewing when looking at this, and I didn't end up putting the change in, the room is certified to hold up to 40 people, and that's by the building Sometimes there are more than 40, slightly more than 40 people in the room when there's something program going on. And when it's a library program, it's kind of like, well, there's only five people in the main area of the library. So if there's 45 in here, the total building occupancy is 99, so it's okay. I've been told it's okay by the building department. But if you have an outside group that has 40 people coming into the room, like the room may be certified to hold up to 40 people, but if an outside group is bringing in members that are 40-strong, and they're then using all of our parking spots, they're limiting access to the community room from, I mean, they're limiting access to the library itself by our patrons who might just be showing up on the night that there's an outside group meeting here, and then they can't find a place to park, and they're parking down on the street. Or they are finding a place to park in the parking lot, then, and then they walk in and there's just staff out there, but it's because of the program going on in here. So in other words, even though it's certified to hold up to 40 people, I don't know if we need for outside groups need to keep it at 40 people. I don't know. And I didn't make the change in this, but it's just, and it's not something I'm even necessarily asking to do right now, but I'm putting it out there that we do agree to hosting 40. And if more than 40 show up for the outside group, we're not doing a count to know how many are actually coming in. And really, we just end up hearing from people who will say, hey, couldn't get in the building last night, or, you know, I just had to park out down the road to get here. So it's just something.
Do you think it's worth perhaps trying to take account over the next three to six months and see if?
Sure.
If it is an issue perhaps?
Okay. I think that's, that was another reason for changing the, how far in advance an outside group needed to book. Because it's, large groups like that are, they can't just do it one month in advance. They do need more time to be able to, so that they know for their membership that they can have, they've got the room for three months out. That gives them a lot more flexibility. So that might stop this problem altogether anyway by making it just one month in advance. But that's a good idea. If we kept a count, then I could report back and let you know how that's going. But that's, but that's the reasons for bringing this up at this time.
I'm just curious, do you get cancellations?
Sometimes. It can be incredibly frustrating, especially if we've tried to maneuver some things around in order to accommodate, and then you get the cancellation a couple of days in advance or even a week in advance. And then, you know, if you were, if you hadn't been holding it for three months, it wouldn't hurt so bad maybe. If you'd only been holding it for a couple of weeks. So that, that does factor in as well. I mean, cancellations due to weather, of course, is one thing, but cancellation just because it's not going to work out.
Yeah.
It's frustrating. Again, because we only have the one room. We're just limited and not, we can, I mean, I think if we had a couple of rooms, they'd be booked a lot more.
Any discussion on the revisions to the policy? Okay, we do need a motion to accept, please.
Motion to accept the changes to the community room policy.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And moving on in the agenda, to announcements, any announcements related to library programs, upcoming programs or services?
Just a couple of things. I did just want to highlight at the meeting that Elizabeth Patello, who's been a tech line at the library for a little over a year now, has been promoted to tech two. She's here a lot more hours, so you should expect to see her a lot more. I'm really happy with this, that she was available and wanted to take the promotion because she's really an awesome employee. And she just, she's in library school right now, and she just really knows what's happening in the library world in terms of what they're learning now in, as a general reference public services librarian. So I'm really happy that she's accepted the promotion, she's in it. And once her 30-day probation is up, I'll be able to post her former position, which will bring our staff up to 10 at some point within the new year. But like I told the staff, and I will honestly say it to you all as well, I'm not just going to hire the first person that applies for this job. Our staff right now, but eight of us who are in the building, you know, regularly, that's not including our custodian, and you know she does a great job, but the eight people who are working at the counter, we are a really good team. We all work really well together. I've never worked with a group of women who get along and respect each other the way this group of women do. There's no talking about anyone behind anyone's back. I mean, it's just, it's a very comfortable place to come in, and I don't want to screw that up. I feel way more pressure about this, this particular position than I have about any of the other ones because I don't want to let them down either. Because we really do, if there were a way to just divvy up those hours amongst existing staff, if the, if the existing staff members wanted the extra hours or could do the extra hours, I would just divvy it up amongst who we have now and call it a day and not even advertise the position. But unfortunately, they all have commitments outside of being here, and are all very happy with the hours that they're working. So I am willing to take my time on hiring for this position. I will, I mean, who knows? I just don't know how many times you can roll the dice and get one each time. I don't know. But maybe it'll all work out. So that's on that. But hopefully, you know, we'll be able to advertise it early in January, and hopefully we get some great candidate options and be able to fill that, you know, by the end of January, hopefully.
And then, were, were you considering adding Friday hours after that?
Yes. No. We can go with for Friday hours before we even get that 10th staff member because that person wouldn't be scheduled to work on Fridays. So the plan, as long as I don't appear differently from any powers that be, the plan is to open on Friday, is beginning Friday, January 4th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. And we're really excited to make that announcement. We will be sending out some press releases. We'll be advertising it here. We're going to do a special newsletter, letting people know. We're already working on the print calendar that we hand out, about 200 copies a month. It feels like 200, maybe it's smaller, between 1:25 and 8:50, it feels like 200. But we're very excited to let people know we're thinking of some programming that we could do on those days so that we are also just making people aware that we're here on Fridays and looking really forward to having everyone come in. So as long as I don't appear differently from anyone.
Okay, and the hours will be?
1:00 to 5:00. 1:00 to 5:00, beginning Friday, January 4th. And yeah, that's not contingent on a new staff member with what we've got.
Nice job.
Yep.
Nice job.
That's some big 2019 news. But in 2018, just as a heads-up slash reminder, we are closed Monday and Tuesday, December 24th and 25th for Christmas. We're also closed Monday and Tuesday, December 31st and January 1st, 2019, for New Year's. Our due dates are already changed so that people will not have items following due on the days that we're closed, so you don't have to worry about that. Your holds won't lead to pickup on those days, so patrons don't have anything to worry about other than the fact that we won't be here and they can enjoy that time without us. But we look forward to seeing everyone on the 26th during school vacation week, where we hope a lot of people will come in and take advantage of what we're offering then. We have a couple of programs scheduled, which you can find out about on the website, acupl.org. Or if you follow us on Facebook or Instagram, we have it all on there too. But we're for sure doing a candy bar bingo, which is very, always a popular program. So candy bar bingo, and then the Friends are also sponsoring a make and take program with essential oils. That's for ages 10 and up. And we're, we have a sign up going for that, which just started, so we're hoping to get a good turnout. People on school vacation looking for something to do. So those are the announcements that I have.
Anybody have anything else before we set our next meeting date? We should plan to meet on Friday in January.
We should do that. Yeah, pick a Friday, any Friday. I'm here every Friday. I was always here every Friday anyway, but now I won't be alone.
It's really close at 5:00.
It's really dark here. That's true. We do close at 5:00 though, so it'd have to be a short meeting. Yeah, not, not knowing when, I would imagine that we're looking at a finance committee being towards the end of the month. So that last Wednesday or the Wednesday before then, the first couple of weeks, I can imagine we'll be doing this already.
All right, well, an option, I suppose Tuesday the 15th, Wednesday the 16th, or Wednesday the 23rd?
16th works on this end. 23rd, I just, I do, I am thinking that could be a possibility, that 16th on this end would work.
I'm not here this afternoon.
You're not.
Tuesday the 15th?
You're out that week, right?
About that week.
That whole week.
Okay.
But, I mean, don't let that hold you up at that very last minute.
Right. Does Wednesday the 16th work for everyone else?
Can't imagine. We'd be doing too much more than just recapping budget or unless something comes up between our two.
Okay. Okay. Then we will set our next meeting Wednesday, January 16th, at 4:30 p.m. here in the community room. Okay. So we have no other business? Was there something else? No? Okay. So no other business, so we need a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. So this December 12th, 2018, meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is 5:13 p.m. Thank you, everyone.